I'd like to welcome everyone to the monthly meeting of the Tyler Independent School District Board of Trustees. There was previously a quorum. Notice the meeting was posted in time and manner required. At this time, we're reconvening from executive session. And first thing that we do every month is the prayer and pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please stand, Reverend Mason's going to lead us in that.
Let us pray. Gracious God, our heavenly Father, it is once more and again that this Board of Trustees sit together and reason together and continue to discuss all that we can do to make this district a better place. But Lord, first, I just want to thank you for being God, for blessing us day in and day out, showering your blessings upon us. Thank you, Lord, that we're able to live in the United States of America and experience the freedoms that we experience. I do ask you, Lord, if it is your will that you might bring us more together as a people, that you will bring together all the divisions, Lord, and make us one, that we might be one in the Spirit and one in the Lord. Thank you for the administrators of the schools and the teachers and staff who are working with our students every day, continue to guide and direct their lives, Lord, and continue to give them the strength to face the challenges that are theirs to face. Thank you for our citizens who continue to support us, who are there for us and there to challenge us. Have your way, Lord, in this place tonight. We remember our departed student from Jack Elementary. We continue to ask your blessings upon Caleb's family. Thank you for all the citizens and all of the families who came together to support her family. And just remind us, Lord, let us all be prepared, for we know not when you will come for us. In the name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. We do not have any action items from executive session, so we will move on to our special recognitions. And stay here for now? All right.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Tonight, Tyler ISD would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our two district students of the month for November. We would like to recognize Kimberly Rivera Torres, a third grade student at Jones Elementary, as our elementary student of the month. Our secondary student of the month is Jose Bernal Espinoza, a 10th grade student at Early College High School. At this time, we will watch a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Kimberly Rivera Torres, a student at Jones Elementary, as our elementary student of the month. Kimberly likes being a Jones Jaguar and enjoys being a third grader at her school.
I like that everybody's teaching me, like what some things I don't know and some things that I do know, and teaching me over and over so I can keep remembering.
Ms. Sabria Mitchell, Kimberly's teacher, says Kimberly shows a great love of learning and always gives her best to classroom instruction. She goes out of her way to help any of her classmates that might struggle with a concept. This love of classroom instruction is what Kimberly wants to do when she grows up.
I want to be a teacher because sometimes I play with my thoughts that I'm a teacher. Sometimes I get some books and start reading them a book.
Our secondary student of the month is Jose Bernal Espinoza, a 10th grade student at the Early College High School campus. He takes great pride in his academic achievements. He will have 29 college hours at the end of this school year. Jose is also involved in extracurricular activities.
I'm actually in the Robert E. Lee Cross Country Team, in the UIL Mathematics Team, and I'm actually part of the student government here at Early College High School.
Jose wants to attend Baylor or Texas A&amp;M and major in Mechanical or Civil Engineering. He has advice for other students that want to be successful at school.
I would tell them, just do your best. Make sure you don't get too distracted with other stuff outside of school. Stay above the average, always be positive, have a good attitude, and just go out and have fun with everything you do.
Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD-TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
And at this time, I'd like to ask our elementary student of the month to please come forward, Kimberly Rivera Torres. first place in the Sons of the American Revolution Joseph S. Rumbaugh Historical Oration Contest. Tristan advances to compete in the National SAR Oritation Contest to be held July 10th through 11th in Boston, Massachusetts. Congratulations, Tristan. Tyler ISD would like to recognize the Robert E. Lee Band High School for winning their 17th consecutive First Division rating at the Region 21 UIL Marching Contest. Mr. Robert Castillo is here and some of his band members, and if they would please come forward at this time. month for November, Ms. Kristy Corey. She's a fifth grade teacher at Orr Elementary. Congratulations to her.
All right, Board members, we have minutes from October 6th and October 17th that we need approval on. If you've had a chance to look over those, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for October 16th, '06, 2016, October 17th, 2016.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Mr. Second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Washington, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. That motion passes. We have public participation tonight. We have one speaker, Ms. Ethel Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins, I will remind you that we like to try to keep all discussion around five minutes. All right? I know you've worked on that and try to refrain from making personal attacks, so we'll look forward to hearing what you've got to say on several topics.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I want to, first of all, thank Pastor Mason for that powerful prayer and want to congratulate Dr. Crawford on being one of the champion who was honored at the Boys and Girls Club Mentoring Alliance Champions Lunch. Congratulations. And I just, tonight, I just want to share some announcements. On the Gospel Village Mentoring, this coming Thursday, they're going to have training for those that want to become mentors, and it's really amazing because when they did their presentation last month, and they talked about during the summer camp, that 61% of children that went to camp learned how to forgive, and that was really amazing and powerful. And they've given me the vendor who conducted the survey with that, and we're going to do that, too. And I was really encouraged by that because that's an awesome testament, because the Bible said, "Gee said, children shall lead them." And think about, 61% of children learned how to forgive, how that would impact other adults and impact their parents, too. And then I want to share now, something I'm really excited about this, being the pastor Crossroads Forgiveness Church, and it says, "Will you let God heal your unforgiven?" We know that during this season, there's a lot of unforgiveness and bitterness, but we can come together and pray and lift them up. And that's what I really love about the prayer that Pastor Mason prayed tonight, about unity coming together, because it's not about us, it's really about the kingdom. I'm really proud of this district, for the board, for the community, that we all come together to really help our children be successful. And I want to applaud the administrators, the teachers, and I'm just really so encouraged and really excited about the success that we're having. And then also, I want to announce that we have a, relating to forgiveness, we have a forgiveness Bible study that's on the first Wednesdays of the month, and it's called The New Cancer on Forgiveness. We have spoken with East Texas Medical Center, and they share, in the Cancer Department, they share that unforgiveness really is a cancer, and a lot of people are really being depressed and down, it really affects their health doing unforgiveness, so we want to really encourage them to do that. And then I also want to share, to encourage us about the article that was in the Thursday paper, October 20th, that says that Texas Education Agency raises its expectation for a Tyler ISD Board, and I want the Board to know that we're praying, pastors, the faith-based community, we're really praying, because we want to see the success of the community, we want to see the success of our students and the teachers, and we're proud of what we've already accomplished. And then I want to share, too, there's another article, it says CPS looks at churches to meet needs. That's Child Protective Services, and they've kind of really restructuring, and Governor Abbott has allocated some funding to them, and this is the first time, last year or so, that they have actually faith specialists within CPS. And a lot of our kids in CPS are impacted, parents need mentors, and the Mentoring Alliance is doing an awesome, awesome job. So I think that's a great blessing. To me, it's an answer prayer for the CPS to recognize, they need the churches to get involved, to help the foster parents, and so we're really excited. We're really excited about that. And I talked about Gospel Village, and their theme is "One Child Mentors, Two Families Change," so we're really excited about that. I'm excited about being on the pastor level, working with the pastors. And I said, this Thursday, there's going to be a training, this Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Boys and Girls Club. And also, we're highlighting, encouraging pastors to come, we have pastors, female pastors, that we can mentor, learn the process, and really impact these kids, especially during the holiday time. And November, December, January, is the high suicide time nationwide, and it's the high depressed time. So I think we have an awesome opportunity to really work together with the Mentoring Alliance, with Gospel Village, and the community. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. All right. We now have a public hearing on the 2016 School First Report.
I'd ask Tasha Bjork, our CFO, to present the Board its annual public hearing for the school's first rating. I believe we were Superior Achievement once again. Ms. Bjork?
Okay. This is for, actually, a year ago's data, because they have to wait till they get our audit and all that, so it's a year old. And they did change the indicators again, so that this is the second time in a row. So some of them are new, and I'll explain the new ones. The first five, you're required to answer yes to, or you don't pass at all. And it's just, was the annual report filed on time? That's one. The second one, there's actually two. Did you have an unmodified opinion on the audit? And were there any material weaknesses in the audit? Or it was free of material weaknesses? And so we were yes on both of those. And the third one is if we were in compliance with all the payment terms of the debt agreements? And yes. And number four is new, and it's, did the district make timely payments to TRS, Texas Workforce Commission, Internal Revenue Service, and other government agencies? That's a new one they added, and the answer is yes. And the next one, I'll need to explain a little bit. This is basically asking, do you have positive fund balance, net asset balance, which means your assets net of liabilities? As you can tell, in '13-14, it was around 30 million. In '14-15, they required us to book our net pension liability from the state, and that's around 19 million. So that is why there's a drop, because that was the first year we had to book that liability.
Just to be clear, we're not the only school district.
Right.
It's all 1,000-plus that were required to mark their books this way, which in the past, it wasn't required to that.
Right. And some of them, this actually hurt them, because if you have a high debt, and then you add this on, you may fall into a negative net asset balance. So this was a new one, but we're fine on it.
Yeah, I think for some of the school districts, there was 95%, I think, scored Superior Achievement, but of those 5%, I think this is the one that caused a lot of the not-answer yes. When we say not-answer yes, it's not us answering that, it's actually how our audit was scored. We do have to turn it in, but it would be a little unethical to not say what we made. But a lot of the 5%, this one right here got a lot of them, because we were having to accrue the pension, like Tasha had explained earlier.
Okay, now, the next, there's 10 more, and they each are worth 10 points. And we got 10 points on all but one, and I'll explain that when we get to that one. And then number six is, were the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund sufficient to cover operating expenses? And yes, we have 101.85% over our operating expenses. And that was new. Number seven was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt, and we were able to cover it three and a half times. So we were fine on that, and that was new. Number eight was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency. And we are at 68.9, and so we got eight points. In order to get 10, you had to be less than 60%. So that's only two points, though, that we lost on that one, and some districts have trouble with this one, too, if they have higher debt. But they go down like it's a stepping stone. You can get as many as two, you can start at two, four, six, eight, and 10. Number nine, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed its expenditures? And yes, we had a positive year, so that one's fine. Number 10, was the debt service coverage ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? Yes, we were at 1.39, and in order to receive the full 10 points, you had to be at 1.2. And number 11, was the administrative cost ratio less than the threshold? Our new threshold, they've changed this a little bit, is 8.55, and we're at 7.04. So we were well under that. If you'll remember, it used to be 11, but they moved that down for larger school districts. So now it's 8.55. On number 12, did the school district not have a 15% decline in the student-to-staff ratio over three years? We only had 2.88, and the ratio's 15, so we were fine on that. Number 13 is the comparison of our PIMS data that we submit, and they compare it to the annual audit, and they want it to be less than 3% variance, but we had no variance, it perfectly matched up. Number 14 is relating to the annual financial report in the auditor's report on material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds. And we had no material noncompliance, and that was new also. And number 15 is also new, and it is talking about our repayment schedule. If you have a financial hardship, but we did not, so we passed that indicator. So just a summary, in '14-15, we met 10 of the 10 indicators with 98 of 100 possible points, and we're supposed to talk about last. '13-14, we met seven. There were seven indicators with 30 points, and we got all of them that year. So we had a Superior Achievement. And if you flip the page, under the first rating, we're required to post the superintendent's contract on the TISD website, and it's under our Financial Transparency page. And on to expense reimbursements, we're required to show the amount of expense reimbursements to board members and the superintendent, and there's a schedule on the next page by board member and superintendent. And just other little questions that we have to go through, did the superintendent receive any other additional fees or compensation from an outside entity? The answer is no. The gifts, did the board or superintendent receive any gifts over $250 during that year? And the answer is no. Business transactions, it relates to if you had a business interest in an entity that does business with a school district, and the answer on that is no, awesome. On the financial solvency, we're required to show the first quarter of the next year, so that would have been September through November 2015, and we had spent around 40 million in the first quarter. And then the additional solvency, did we take out any short-term debt, like tax anticipation notes? No. And then was the fund balance less than 2% of operating expenditures? No. And have we had financial exigency? I have a hard time saying that within the past two years. No. Additional solvency questions, how many superintendents has your school district had in the last five years? Three. And how many business managers? One. And then the rest are just questions that, or you can make additional comments, and we didn't really have anything to comment on what they suggested. So do y'all have any questions?
What was number 11 again?
That's when you consider our central office, the expenditures for administrative staff and central office.
So that looks like we're spending a lot less than the standard set?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
That'd be a good talking point during a legislative year, because they tend to go out and start talking about what administration is, as opposed to what you're spending in the classrooms. Some of your demagogues down there in Austin like to say administration is also your custodial staff, your transportation staff, your maintenance staff, anything that's not related to the actual classroom, they lump that into administration. But as far as the state is concerned, our own rating system, that is the ratio that they look for out there. What are you spending for a district our size in administration? Administrators count myself, Ms. Orr, finance, and HR.
HR and communications, there are several.
Communications, facilities, that would be considered administration, but it is not anything with school leadership or school supervision.
It's not school leadership.
Yeah.
And this is a definition, an external definition, that the state came up with, not one that we've set ourselves, correct?
Correct.
In terms of what goes into the admin costs.
Correct. As long as we stay underneath that 8.55, well under it, actually, then I think that's pretty good use of what we're provided by the taxpayers. In some years, that's leaner than others. This year, we haven't had a curriculum instruction person for six months now, and certainly, we've patched that together, so there's been some savings there and here and there for that. It kind of varies from every year, but we're usually around 6% to 7%. It kind of varies from every year, but we're usually around six to seven percent.
Okay, questions?
Tasha, on number five, um, that had the, the change in essentially accounting practices, um, the thirty million from the thirteen, fourteen, um, I guess it's safe to say we had a liability, the liability existed, we just weren't required to report it. They changed the reporting guidelines, and so it's not that we've deteriorated that much.
No.
Um, in reality, I guess thirteen, fourteen should come back some to reflect that.
Right, but they did not measure it at that time. They only gave us the amount on August thirty-first fifteen. So we had to just book the entire thing in that one year. And it's really not on our regular financial statements, it's only on the government-wide that are kind of cash-based, or they're like the business world. So they want, I think the only people that really even look at that maybe are bond, like when you go out on the market for bonds and that type of thing.
And then on number eight, um, so that's a ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets. Do you happen to know what the denominator is with the total asset number they're using there?
Well, that would be your long-term debt over your buildings and that type of thing, over your fixed assets.
But, um, you don't know the magnitude of that number?
Well, no.
I mean, it's a big number.
I don't have it, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's, it's over two hundred million. You know, we have definitely like two hundred million in debt, and so our assets are higher than that.
All right, board members, anything else? You can think about it for a second. This time, we want to provide an opportunity for public comment on the first rating system only, not, not in general, just on the first rating system. We're required to have a public comment time, if anyone would like to address that. All right, if not, um, we appreciate the report. It's a great job again this year. Thank you for everything that you do, keeping us out of the headlines in these areas, and, uh, we really appreciate it. All right. Move on to business, legal, finance, consent agenda. There's A through H items, board members. I am not pulling any on my end. If you need any to discuss, let me know now, otherwise I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve items A through H in the business, legal, finance, consent agenda.
Set.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now we move on to the curriculum instruction consent agenda. Same, same scenario, any pulled? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, Roma numeral twelve, A through F.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, Dr. Nation, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries seven oh also. Now we get to move on to the District of Innovation Superintendent Staff Report.
Okay, at this time, I'd like the three area school chiefs to take a seat at the table so they can provide their comments, uh, as we start discussion about an opportunity that was presented in the last legislative session for House Bill eighteen forty-two. It's a, it's a heck of a house bill, encourage everyone to read it. But something that did come out of that was the opportunity for a school district to apply for a District of Innovation status. Under separate cover tonight, you have a packet in front of you that I'll go through, a few things that are of highlight here that might provide an opportunity, uh, to, uh, break free from some of the constraints of statute, um, that this house bill actually allows you to do it. Am I eligible is the first question. What makes, what allows a district to be eligible or ineligible for a District of Innovation status? The first thing that you look at is the actual academic accountability rating of a school district, whether it's met standard or did not meet standard, which is improvement required. Tyler I S D did meet standard, so you are eligible to seek District of Innovation status if you would like, if you would like to. On the next page is how do you become a District of Innovation? Is the process begins by, by, in two ways, one being with a Board of Trustees resolution, which is attached in your packet. There's no action tonight, this is only discussion, or actually superintendent, it is discussion. Staff report, excuse me. Guess we can discuss it afterwards. Uh, or a signed petition by majority of your district-level advisory committee. Board conducts, there's a, it's the best we could get it, is for the public. I apologize for that, but that's what T E A provided us, or Tasby maybe. The board conducts a public hearing to consider developing innovation plan, and in thirty days of the public hearing, the board must formally decide to pursue or decline the opportunity. So it's kind of like a public comment period during that time. Once you're moving forward, then the, on the next page, the board appoints an innovation plan committee. It does not necessarily have to be your district advisory committee, your district planning committee, it's a committee that's put together, provides for a comprehensive educational program for the district, which the program may include innovative curriculum, innovative instructional methods, provisions regarding community participation, campus governance, parental involvement, modifications to the school day or year. As y'all are aware, T E A has shifted from instructional days to instructional minutes per year. You also are very aware from some of the comments that are provided to the, to the board, uh, from the public about what a school calendar could look like. Currently, right now, we're constrained by statute that says you must start by X date and end by Y date. Certainly, that'd be something we could consider as a District of Innovation, to either start earlier or end earlier, um, depending upon, uh, what, what our District of Innovation plan looks like. You could pursue, um, different accountability and assessment measures. In other words, if you wanted the school district to only be assessed by S A T and A C T performance and exempted from S T A R and E O C, that'd be a heck of a, a project, uh, but that is something that you could consider. Provisions regarding the district budget, sustainable program funding, um, any other innovations prescribed by the Board of Trustees, um, including anything, uh, that, that might deal with, uh, chapter twenty-one of the Texas Education Code, which are teacher contracts, uh, also compensation. Also, in-district charter schools are also an option, um, to where you allow a lot of, uh, flexibility and autonomy to an actual charter school. Once you have that plan, what do you do? You post it on your district website for at least thirty days. Board notifies the Commissioner of Education, the intent to adopt that plan. And your chapter eleven district committee, um, holds a public meeting to consider and approve the final version with a majority vote. And Board of Trustees adopts with two-thirds of a majority vote. I think we're at that blue, the very bottom blue square or rectangle. Flip over a couple of more pages, there's some exemptions. Again, we'll go over those again that are included but not limited to the district governance, the curriculum, state assessment system, accountability system, school finance, any federal requirements, other requirements in state law outside of the Texas Education Code. allowable exemptions include but not limited to educator certification. That is one thing that's probably going, going to be more, uh, concerning, I guess, as we, as we move further, is finding qualified staff. Um, as y'all know, right now, education is being attacked on all sides, it's not, it's not, not the most popular profession to enter in. Pretty tough right now, so we don't have a lot of, uh, of our population that's wanting to go into teaching. But certainly, there's also folks that do have college degrees that may not want to go through the teacher certification process. We have some of that in place now with some of our hardest staff, uh, positions at Career Technology Center. Our auto mechanic, our auto, is it auto?
Collision repair.
Collision repair. Instructor is not a certified teacher. Is that correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Okay. But we do have an exemption from the state of Texas that allows him to instruct our students and them to receive credit. In math and science, social studies, and English, that is not the case. However, there might be some opportunities down the road for that. The first and last day of school, the length of the school day, class size ratios. You know, twenty-two to one was kind of this arbitrary figure that was, or ratio that was pulled out of the air a lo, a while back. The research behind it does not mean that twenty-two to one is, is a science. In fact, you have to get into this almost a single digit to start seeing a true impact of what a teacher-to-student ratio would be to affect academic performance. Twenty-two to one's important to us because our communities made it important, and that's an okay number to land upon. But if we ever needed to get past that twenty-two to one waiver, we just couldn't afford to do it, and we wanted to quit asking for waivers, that is something that you could actually have in a, uh, innovation, uh, plan. The designation of a campus behavior coordinator, I don't know why this one's in there, but right now statute says that you have to identify someone to do that. Usually, that's a principal or an assistant principal, um, at one of our campuses. I don't know why that's such a big deal right now, but that's something that somebody put in here and say, hey, you can get past that. I don't even know if that's, that's, that's something that we want to get past. And then certain purchasing and contract requirements, uh, as far as state purchasing laws go, but I don't think we'd go for anything like that unless Tasha has a great, um, suggestion for the board to consider. What are some things you need to consider as, if you, if we wind up having some interest in the District of Innovation? Do you need to update local policies to correspond with new exemptions? Certainly, that's something that would be quite a task. We've had some opportunity here last week to talk about some of our district policies. Articulating the problem your plan is addressing? Is there a program you're trying to implement? Is there a big area of need that can be addressed by this flexibility? And then also involvement of stakeholders, including those who not always agree with you. Some of the districts that are out there that are actually on the cutting edge of this are Mansfield I S D, Spring Branch I S D, El Paso I S D, Victoria I S D, to name a few, um, some that, some that are smaller. Roscoe Consolidated I S D is a rural district in East Texas, and every one of their students graduates with an associate degree from their school district. It's pretty ambitious. I think Roscoe has, I don't know, maybe a hundred kids in high school. Might be pretty attainable for them. Uh, but they, they've actually set that that, their District of Innovation, their district culture is, is to make sure, I think it's called Roscoe Collegiate High School, not, not consolidated, but, uh, it's pretty interesting, and they've done that through the District of Innovation. There's some more, um, definitions in the back, some more information as provided by Tasby, and certainly T E A as well. So I want to provide that opportunity for you guys to have a, a presentation from us, uh, very superficial presentation, and if there's any questions that might want, you might want to ask at this time, to see if you'd like us to maybe go forward and do some more investigation before we go any further.
Dr. Crawford, why would you recommend that Tyler I S D consider becoming a District of Innovation?
Well, if we went, if, if we got that excited about it, I don't, I don't know if we're ready for that or not. Uh, we certainly had, and I, just, just for full disclosure to the public, we had an opportunity for some of our trustees and our administrators to, to go to a, a fairly large, one-day conference on this, but we had a tragedy here in the school district, or we'd have certainly been a whole lot up, up to, more up to speed, um, if we were to attend to that last week, but we had other things that were more pressing, pressing here locally. But I certainly, the flexibility to consider, um, without interference, um, things such as year-round school or in-district charters. To accomplish some of those things, there's a lot of bureaucratic red tape that you, that you have to go through to, to do that. It gives you flexibility, um, that it's not so cookie cutter. And I think that this one thing we've talked about here, um, in the last two years is some of the reasons that we may have been performing the way we've been performing as far as student outcomes goes is because of tradition. And those expectations that we go to school from eight to four every day, and that everybody plays football, and that everybody's in the marching band, um, we realize that just like with some of our other programs, like early college high school and our Career Technology Center, that, that not every student fits in those types of programs. This is another option for the board and the administration and the public to consider, uh, us to move away from tradition and, uh, do some things a little bit differently to meet a certain block of students' needs.
So you see this impacting education in a positive way?
I don't think you go full in, and I'm, I'm not so sure that whatever Spring Branch does will fit in Tyler, um, or what El Paso does fits in Tyler, or what Roscoe I S D, Roscoe Collegiate I S D fits in Tyler. But there are some opportunities. In some of our chronically, uh, struggling schools, is the traditional way the best way to do something? We, we've talked about that for a long time now and tried to fix things, not just in the twenty-six months I've been here, but there's been a pattern, there's been a history there. And what are some of the things that we possibly could do under the District of Innovation to assist those struggling, uh, parts of our community?
I, I just want to ask a clarifying question, so, you know, tomorrow morning, we don't wake up and hear that Tyler I S D is going to year-round school or anything like that. So, this would be an opportunity for, like you said, some of our specific struggling campuses to pursue opportunities, you know, such as that, or a lot of other things, like charter at one specific campus, you know, so it's kind of like we would be able to act creatively within our district, and some schools could, could do this, and others might be able to do that.
That's correct. This is the superintendent's staff report. We're having a discussion right now. Any type of formal voting or plans would occur to later, or action would occur down the road, even if y'all, if you wanted to go that route, you may not, you may say no, let's, let's do it the traditional way. This is something that's in House Bill eighteen forty-two. There's a little bit of an organic, uh, groundswell out there that, that school districts are seeking this. And, uh, we've known that we've had some struggling, uh, parts of our, of our school district, and we've been trying to fix them in a very traditional way. There's no doubt that, that we're giving our best shot. We had a lot of success last year, but we need, we need even more opportunity for our students, um, certainly in some pockets. And, and to do that, this might be an avenue. If not, we can still be creative, but this is available out there right now, and some folks are actually considering this.
You know, I'm real sensitive, so I would like to say that we have schools with students who are struggling. But my concern is, why would it have to be just a school with students who are struggling? Why couldn't any other school make that decision and go a different route and, uh, with their programmatic thrust?
Sure, and that's why it's called a District of Innovation. And so, there's no doubt that that would happen, but, but it, but instead of constraining some of the schools that I just listed or mentioned, uh, they would have opportunities to, to break free of some of the constraints, if, if, if those were available, as will some of the other schools that maybe are performing at a higher level. And you know, good principals are already doing things in a very creative way. If you look at Birdwell Elementary, and, uh, the demographics there are just as challenging as a whole, as a, a lot of other parts of our community. And last year, they were one of the top three performing schools, um, in our community. Certainly, they have a, have had a, a great leadership there for a long time, that torch has been passed, and they're having a great year, um, right now, but, but they've used the Gomez-Gomez model of dual-language instruction. There's a lot, you can't just say you're going to do dual-language Gomez-Gomez, it has to be part of your DNA and your culture, it's your campus, and that's what's made it successful. Um, it can be done, but they've done it in a way that's been very creative, and maybe there's some more ideas that can spring, um, out of this District of Innovation opportunity if the board chooses to go that way. out of this District of Innovation opportunity if the board chooses to go that way.
Dr. Crawford, do you feel that our district is eligible to become a District of Innovation?
Yes, ma'am. We meet the first criteria, and that is that we, we have met standard. There are some school districts in the state that are ineligible because they are improvement required as a school district. And while we have a few campuses that are almost there, we are eligible to be this, a District of Innovation.
Thank you.
Are there any negatives that people have come across or thought about, I mean, you know, spoken publicly? What would be the concerns that somebody might have? But it does seem like a kind of a positive thing where we're getting more flexibility within the constraints of state law?
You know, I think they range far and wide on what those concerns may be. One concern I have is, is it worth the work? It's pretty new. I mean, it just came out of the last legislative session. I don't know what they're going to wind up doing at this next legislative session. There hasn't been talk that they're going to reverse it, but you never know about House Bill eighteen forty-two. So I think that the newness of it may be of a concern because there hasn't been any research that says that it's effective. You could go from that to saying, where's the researcher to see if it's, say that this is effective or not, to maybe looking at the school calendar. You know, the Texas Association of, I don't know, recreation or vacationing?
Tourism.
Tourism. The tourism lobby sure likes the way the calendar is now because for some reason, their data says that by golly, you've got, you can't go to school to the, to the last Monday of August. Because everybody, you know, I don't know what happened to the other two and a half months that we had for people to go to Galveston one last weekend. But they've just, they've been pretty firm about that Monday, and whatever. But I will say that here, you know, we, this last calendar, we tended not to give up instructional days because they, they turned it to minutes, and we had just a little bit of noise about the calendar from some parents wanting to get out before Memorial Day because by golly, we all got out before Memorial Day. Well, we didn't have as many instructional days or instructional minutes that were required. And we tend to take a few days in our district that, that other districts don't take. For instance, Good Friday. That's kind of important to our community, and rightfully so. So in saying that, this does maybe give you a little bit of flexibility up on the front end. I will caution you, though, that if you, if you wind up having that flexibility up on the front end, it does cost the school district some money, upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars a day the first year, to get the, everything calibrated correctly. We've already looked into that. So if you, if you're asking pros and cons, there's one for you to consider, Mr. Trustee.
Thank you.
Am I right on that, Tasha? Is that the number that you gave me? Okay.
That's a high bar. Must have some very compelling strategies that are going to make a big difference to jump over that.
I'm pretty sure Ms. Bjork has already told us we're not doing that. Community, you can, if you're watching online, you can rest that that's being protected by our CFO.
Where do you see this discussion going from tonight?
Well, certainly, I think in communication with the trustees or hearing maybe what you would like me to go forward, the next thing would be a board resolution or a petition signed by the, signed by the majority of the district advisory committee. We haven't really put it in front of the district advisory committee yet, but plan to. And then possibly bring it back in front of you guys. There is some time issues about this because of the legislative session coming up. You know, I don't think that they would fast-track any type of bills early to get them signed to reverse this. They've got some other things that are fairly important down there. But you may be looking at May as being, you know, the last day of the legislative session. There may be something that actually gets signed into law that reverses this opportunity. So there's some more time to probably consider this. However, I'm going to caution you on that. A majority of our planning does crank up when we get back from Christmas. So if there's a District of Innovation, if there's planning implications on that, we'll need to have that sooner rather than later.
When you set the plan up, they talk about the Innovation Plan Committee will write a plan. Are you stuck with the plan? Once that gets approved, do you have flexibility within the plan? How detail, everything that we're thinking about doing as a District of Innovation would be in that plan, and we would have to adhere to that for?
Within the framework of that plan, yes, sir. And the plan can be up to five years long. But as far as inserting something into the District of Innovation plan that you first adopt, there would probably be, I haven't seen this yet, but there would probably be a process for you to adjust that, but you can't just go and, you know, without approval from the board or without approval from the Innovation Committee or the District Advisory Committee. You'd probably have to go through the same process to actually adjust your plan as you go forward.
Is this something, Dr. Crawford, that you want us to look at and consider some options for this academic year, or we're planning this academic year for next year?
This would be for the sixteen, oh, excuse me, the seventeen, eighteen school year, if we did anything at all.
And then we have citizens who are present, and then there'll be others who will listen to this on the television. And I'm sure you will welcome any comments.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, the thing about this is that we have an opportunity to, to, hate, I hate this cliche, think outside the box. I'm more of a no-
Think like there is no box.
Be a no-box thinker. And so in saying that, I think that you, this is an opportunity to, to break free of some of the constraints of the Texas Education Code. I will say the one thing that intrigues me is an in-district charter opportunity. Choice is pretty big out there. We know that they, they've already filed two hundred, prefiled two hundred and seventy bills, I think, at the legislature today. And, and some of that, the V word, the vouchers are something that's probably on the horizon, at least to talk about. In saying that, what are we doing within our district for opportunities for student choice? What programs are there? We know we have a lot of it at the, at the secondary level, and at the high school level. We really don't have much middle school choice, other than just basic transfers. But all of our middle school programming looks pretty similar across the district, and I don't know if I can tell you that it's working well at every school.
Do you think there would be a chance that the board could go and visit another district? So we could learn more about this?
Yes, ma'am. Again, I think it's pretty new, and then we did have the conference last week. I think we can probably go speak with Mansfield, who hosted the actual event, and then actually has gone through this process already. So if that's something that the board is willing to, for me to arrange on a different date, last week was just a pretty rough week. The week before was a pretty rough week as well, so we kind of had to cancel that. But I think that that's something that we possibly can consider as we go forward, and something that we're going to have to do a whole lot more research on as well.
All right. Well, thank you for the report. Anybody want to lob a question to the guys on the front row that came all the way up there to? Something? All right, guys. Thank you all. Okay, we move on to a discussion item, A, facilities update.
Ask Mr. Loper to actually take a seat here at the table. I'm sure they're going to have some questions for you, Mr. Loper. Ask Ms. Loper, Mr. Loper to actually join us today so that he could present some of the data in regard to our facilities. As y'all know, we've wrapped up the two thousand thirteen building program with CTC, a New Moore Middle School, a New Bolter Middle School, and a new Three Lakes Middle School, along with the renovation of Rice Elementary School and Dixie Elementary School. Did I leave anything off?
Squip Aquatic Center.
Aquatic Center. But that wasn't part of the actual bond program.
No, that was-
Put a mic in front of you, Tim.
That was interim project.
It was, it's general fund.
Right. So today, we want to give you an update of kind of what we have left and start that discussion. A sometimes delicate subject, but I think it is something that we need to talk about at this DIAS tonight, about an update. After all, per statute, the school board of trustees is the stewards of the district's facilities in terms of what your requirements are as far as improving those and in the caretaking of those facilities. And tonight's something we'd like to provide you an update on. What we have left in our district inventory as far as facilities go is, why don't you read those off, Mr. Loper?
Of course, we have, we haven't done anything yet to Robert E. Lee, to John Tyler. We have Hubbard. We have Hogg. We have Dogan. And it's pretty much about it.
I guess-
We have five schools.
There's five schools.
Right.
Starting with those, Mr. Loper, why don't you read the Facilities Condition Index, provide the board with the data in regard to those Facility Conditions Index, and describe to the public what an FCI is?
Okay, FCI is Facility Condition Index. And basically, if y'all recall from the past and the past bond issues, is we do a facility assessment, and we determine the condition of a building is, what is, what will it cost to bring that building up to today's not only educational standards, but also building standards such as ADA, lighting, electrical, HVAC, and all of those standards? And then what does that cost look like? And then also, what additions do you need as far as educational standards go, such as additional classrooms and things like that? We compare that cost to what is the cost that would be equal to that to a new building? So, you know, we have a whole lot of different, a whole lot of different indexes on that because all the, all the buildings are different. So I'm going to take Robert E. Lee first. And basically, if you could remodel and add-on to Robert E. Lee and bring it up to speed as opposed to a new building that's a hundred and twelve percent, okay? John Tyler. Go ahead, sir.
Just, just want to make sure I understand, a hundred and twelve percent, that is?
The cost of a-
The numerator is the cost of repairs, the denominator is what a new building would cost?
Mm-hmm. Compare of repairs and additions. That's additional square footage. John Tyler, I looked at John Tyler. It's actually a newer structure. If most of you know, might recall that John Tyler burned in nineteen eighty-three, and ninety percent of that building was rebuilt. Now, it's a, it's a lot sounder structural building, so that plays into, into also the Facility Condition Index. At John Tyler, it's eighty-five point two percent. Dogan. Dogan, and as I mentioned to you guys earlier, that, you know, every site's different. You run into a really high Facility Condition Index with Dogan because we have no place to take the kids, and we can't build the campus on the same site. So we kind of really didn't consider it a whole lot, but if we could, it would be a hundred and twenty-nine point sixteen percent.
When you say we didn't consider it a whole lot, what are you saying?
Well, that rebuilding it on site. We did look at it, but as far as-
Saying on site, right.
But I'm not sure how to even do that.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Hubbard. Hubbard is also a little newer facility. It has a good structure on it, but it becomes an eighty-eight point zero seven percent Facility Condition Index. And that's opposed to adding and, and repairs, completely remodeling, bringing up speed, and then all of the new structure that you'd have to do at Hubbard to get that done. And then finally, Hogg. Hogg, in a way, is kind of like Dogan. And first of all, it's a local historical rating on it. It's landlocked also. The, the, the rooms are small compared to middle school, so if you were to use it as a middle school. Anyway, we, we just pretty much not doing a whole lot of additions, but just remodeling that school. And if, if the district decided to repurpose or whatever, it's at eighty-six point five four percent. And that's the schools we have left.
You spoke to the, the size of the classrooms at Hogg?
Yes, sir.
And you may not have that data in front of you about what the square footage of the, I know that they vary from room to room.
The small ones are at six hundred. That is, and I've seen twenty-five kids in a six hundred square foot classroom packed in there.
Yeah.
And then you have some that maybe the largest is around seven fifty.
And of course, we've capped the enrollment there.
Functional capacity at Hogg is four?
Four, twenty, something like that.
Yeah. So we're talking about a much, much smaller school here. Just keep that in mind also.
Four thirty. Four thirty is the design.
So even if it was renovated, you're still talking about renovated to four thirty, not renovated to eight hundred to a thousand like your other. If you went to make that like your other middle schools, you would be looking at a huge dollar increase to add a wing or a whole cafeteria.
It starts a domino effect.
I mean, it's all, yeah.
Kind of like, like I mentioned Dogan, we almost end up landlocked there. Then you, if you have a thousand, you've got to also upgrade the athletic facilities, the parking lots, which we wouldn't have room for, and the gymnasiums and all that, if you wanted to do it like our new middle school. So it's, it becomes a, kind of a domino effect as far as the dollars having to be spent on a building like that.
Dr. Crawford, does, what does the innovation districts, the, our overall plan for middle school? We've been on the nineteen seventies model for, since I was in middle school. Is all of that come into play in trying to decide what we're doing with the middle school facilities in the district?
Well, I think it certainly depends on what you commit yourself to, that, that if you were to go towards a construction program, you certainly would not want to marry yourself to that traditional model if that's, if you're looking to do something different. As far as extracurricular activities go, we do have some pockets of concerns from myself and Greg Priest, our Athletic Director, on participation numbers. And certainly, that's something that we need to consider as we go forward. We've gone to a three-middle-school model of eight hundred students, asking them to participate at the same level with, with maybe a school that has only four hundred and thirty kids in it. Or five hundred students may not be quite as fair as it once was. And I, and I know y'all can look at me and say, well, by golly, get those kids excited and get them into those extracurricular programs. Well, maybe they're the wrong extracurricular programs for this generation of kids. It's something we need to consider. And I certainly don't want to go on record and meet with the media here tonight and saying what my preference is, because I don't really have one. I just know that our children are certainly faced with different desires and needs as opposed to maybe- to maybe what, what I was ready to do, in suiting up and playing Friday night football. It may not be what our kids are interested in right now. For instance, we're, we're actually bringing, starting middle school soccer this year. And I think we're playing that district-wide. Isn't that right, Mr. Sanchez? So, we're excited about that. We think our participation numbers are gonna be high there as well, on all parts, all parts of, of our district. So, it would be something to consider, that if you go and build another more, 800 students, is that, that's what you're committing to. Could you do a District of Innovation with that? Certainly, absolutely. But, but some of your extracurriculars may be needing adjustment as we go forward.
Mr. Loper, you mentioned HOG classrooms, 600 to 675 square feet, and the smaller ones. Can you contrast that with the newer schools that we've bought, and what the size of those classrooms would be?
Yes, sir. In our educational program, we built those schools at 825 square feet per classroom, excluding your laboratories, and music, and specialized rooms, which were 1,200 square feet for science labs.
Any other questions about the Facilities Condition Index, and what's going on in the district there? Okay. What else?
What else y'all want to talk about?
Well, what are, what, have you looked at any site plans? Have you looked at any costs of buildings? Have you looked at different options of cost?
Yes, sir.
Where those would possibly be?
Yes, sir. To start off, I think we, we've looked at a lot of different models, about what might be in our future. And knowing that the, the cost of schools are increasing, you certainly don't hope for what happened in 2008. That did wind up getting us a pretty good deal, square footage-wise, here in, in East Texas, as compared to what the pre-recession cost of schools were. Those, those costs have now returned. The ed, the, the architects and the construction management firms out there, and the subcontractors, they're not hungry anymore. They were pretty hungry in 2008. Right now, it's, it's, it's pretty competitive out there with all the building that's going on. Places like Dallas ISD's having a hard time finding subcontractors in the metroplex, just because of the, the era of construction that's occurring up there right now. So, in saying that, we did look at a lot of different models, and getting a pulse of, 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 not so much what, what I thought we could afford, or what, what the administration thought we could afford, but what some of those models might look like. We do know that a brand-new high school on either side of town would cost you around $130 million apiece. Both high schools were looked at and able to actually be built on-site, where they're currently at right now. So, you wouldn't have to purchase new land for either one. I think our city fathers did a great job at John Tyler, of purchasing that, that acreage over there. The amount of land over there is able to do what you can do there. And since the board is, since I came on board, the board has actually purchased some additional property to own the entire block, from the loop frontage to shilo. And so, there's enough acreage there to actually put a 6A high school up. We looked at renovations and new additions at both sites. That cost would be 121, around $122 million for renovations and new additions at Robert E. Lee. And for renovations and new additions at John Tyler High School, because of its age, because of its structure, a little bit newer, almost 20 years newer, of $87 million. We also looked at the possibility of a new middle school, and that was for, for a different location than, than where it possibly for Dogan, and that's around $40 million for a new middle school building.
For one or?
For one.
For one.
Mr. Loper, does that include land? Do you remember? No, it does not.
No, it does not.
I've got it on my notes, it does not include land. So, if you include land, it's gonna be 42 million. And that might be a little high on the land purchase. We did also look at some modifications to Hubbard, along with some renovations at HOG. HOG's renovation's going to be projected to be, at this time, anywhere from nine to 10 million, and that's without an addition. That's actually straight renovations of that facility only. Remember, you've got an ADA upgrade.
HOG.
Did I say HOG? I'm sorry. You have to ADA upgrade HOG before you start anything. And there's a lot of abating that has to go on at that, at that location as well. It's a great building. Appreciate the, the community allowing us to, to build those other schools, so we can get rid of those portables, for one. That helps.
Since you're on middle schools, could you talk with me, you said HOG is a great building, what about Dogan?
Dogan is... It's tough to ensure equity at Dogan. So, there's no doubt that that is something in the future that, that we're gonna have to attack. They're doing a great job right now. Ms. Holmes is having an outstanding, she's now into her second year, and so I think leadership is going to pull that pretty far.
Well, I was really speaking of the condition of the building.
Sure. It's, it's antiquated. It was built in an era to where there wasn't a lot of attention provided to facilities, and it's nearing the end of its lifespan.
Thank you.
Our last bond was 161 million? Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 164, I believe.
Ballpark.
Yeah. You're in the ballpark.
65, okay. And that was, from my memory, the largest bond TISD had ever passed.
Had passed, yes.
So, you're talking about numbers, if you went with a new, two new high school facilities, you're talking about an extra 100 million dollars?
Yeah, you're, unless I'm influenced otherwise, you're probably not gonna get a recommendation on that.
Okay.
From us. And then, for some of the third high school proponents that are out there, for that size, would be about 100 million apiece, so.
So, you've looked at the possibility of three high schools also?
Yes.
And that would be upwards of 300, huh?
Correct.
Okay. Board members' questions to this point?
We'll be hearing more later, I'm sure, from the administration.
Yes, I think this is just a first attempt in a public meeting, as everyone knows, that follows TISD, that we are, when we talk about facilities and future bonds, it's gonna be an open session. There's Open Meetings Act, we do not talk as a group behind closed doors about this, so if it seems a little awkward. At times, when we're up here, it's because these, this is the only time that we get to talk as a group about, about facilities. So, we are kinda wading our way through this. What we've asked the district to do was to come and show us what our options are for the remaining facilities that we have, that have not been affected by a bond election that the community has passed. So, that's kind of where, where things are right now. You've got five schools, you've got new, all the way to doing nothing, as options at each school, and everything in between. We have found a way in the past, thank, thanks to our community and, and leadership in our community for putting a long-range facilities plan together back in the early 2000's, we found a way to build a, a good many new elementary schools, and we also found a way to take existing facilities that were still usable, had not reached their useful life, and add to them and renovate them. And so, I think we're open to anything. I'm gonna speak for the board just on past history. We want to find something that works for the community, that the community can support, where they see that we are being good stewards of the property we have, and of the tax dollars we have. But at the same time, we don't want to build something that 20 years down the road, 30 years down the road, the next group that comes along looks and says, who made that decision? Those are the cheapest, sorriest facilities, I can't believe they would do that to kids. So, I feel like we will continue down that path, of trying to find the best combination we can to address these last few needs in our district. We started out with, I believe, 26 or 7 facilities, it seemed like, and we're down to five. So, got, got a little bit of work left.
I have a question.
Sure.
On, we have broached the subject of the District of Innovation, and it appears that the things that we may do differently will be done, at least in the first place, if we do them, with students that are needing help in achievement. And we know that Dogan needs, needs assistance there. Would it be, would the District of Innovation, or the innovative approaches that we take toward, for things like that, would that influence what we need to do facility-wise, or not?
This is such an ambiguous response, but possibly. I mean, stinking Arlington just built a 1 billion, just passed a $1 billion stadium to tear down a stadium they've had for 22 years, you know, for a baseball team. And so, I think you kinda balance on, my point is on this, is you kinda balance on what you're asking of your community to support, certainly on the instructional side, but on the, on the tax implication side. So, again, I'll go back and say, yes, you, you could possibly take a look at that. Are you committing, you're committing to a traditional system, district-wide, no matter what you commit to. I think, you know, looking at the three high school model, which there was a little bit of noise about that out there, and of course, some folks probably didn't quite understand that it would take a lot of boundary changes to make that happen, and length and time to make that happen. But at the, at the, at the same time, the price tag was going to be quite extravagant for, for all parts of the community. Even though we've got those numbers, it was going to be something that was going to be suicide to even bring it in front of the board. But in saying that, I think it's, it's, you do have to be cogni-, that's why I said possibly. You have to be cognizant of what your programming does, does it match up with your facilities? But does that necessarily mean that that's gonna happen? No, I think that if we decide to do a District of Innovation, that you're gonna be able to come up with something, after getting input from a variety of sources, that you can be happy with, no matter what facilities that you have.
And, and to speak to that, to your point, Trish, you know, even if, I would assume, and Tim, you can help me out here, but if, if we were to start building in theory tomorrow, you wouldn't be ready to move into, like, a new Dogan until, how, how many years?
It's 18 months.
18 months?
For a middle school.
Yeah, so, if we, if you did do a District of Innovation for at least, you know, the next school year, you'd be doing it in that building. I mean, so you-
Sure.
In the, in the existing building, and then, depending on when, if, the public, or whatever we decide, you know, that were to happen, it'd be a little, little bit, so you'd be forced to, to use that facility, regardless of if we were going to get a new
Sure.
Building.
And, and let me encourage the board to reference the demographic study. As we go forward, I know it's one thing that Tim and I, we're looking at maps all, all day, every day. I made him do a whole fresh, brand-new set, get more eyes on them, put them in a different part of our, our office, because you've gotta have a good feel of that as well. And, and I'm not bringing this to the forefront, but I think that's something that's going to wind up being what drives us, is where we're able to serve our population, and where growth is occurring, and it's west. I know everybody in the public, in the community, wants to talk about southwest. Bolter is full. We can afford some more kids at Bolter, we'd have to add staff there, but they are operating at, at, at a pretty good rate right now. Am I right, Mr. Sanchez? As is Three Lakes. So, our, our two western middle schools are operating at, at pretty good capacity right now. And so, in saying that, I think Dixie's one of our elementary schools that is projected to have a growth as well, as, as well as Jack. So, to encourage the board to go back and look at, it is west, is something that we're gonna have to consider. It doesn't mean you have to build a new school out there, it just means you have to understand where it's coming, and, and what are the strategies that it's going to take to maybe deal with that issue. It's not always throwing millions of dollars at a school. It, it, there's sometimes, there's other, there's other ways of going about that. Some of that's the District of choice, some of it is boundaries. But that's not something that we're even talking about right now. We just need to be very cognizant as we go forward, in what we choose to do.
I will say that seems like at the middle school level, we, we, as a district, I as a board member, we've got to get a plan for the foreseeable future for our middle schools, and what we're gonna do with them. Before, I would feel great about investing $40 million in a facility that we didn't really feel clear, this is where we're going for the next 10, 20, 30 years. That's my trouble, as we've kinda gone through this, these facilities, and when we get to the middle school, it's like, you know, you hit some, it's not as smooth a pavement, trying to figure out which direction we're going there. And that's just, just what I want to say openly, we have got to have a plan before we put something on a ballot at the middle schools.
The, we've looked at several different options. I have kids on two campuses that are renovated, not new campuses. And I wasn't on the board when that happened, but those buildings were done in a very excellent way.
Thank you.
You cannot tell the difference between those buildings and the new buildings. It saves the taxpayer significant dollars as a result of that, too. So, I hope that anyone who would be listening, who would hear renovation, and think that that is somehow not an excellent solution for the high schools that we've talked about here. I know at the elementary level, not only is the construction excellent, the way the process was managed to minimize the disruption on the campus as well, was done in an excellent way. And so, if we choose to go down that route, I'm confident that the district has the expertise and the partnerships that can do an excellent job, to where very quickly, we'd be looking them like they were new campuses, not like they were a remodel, in the same way we might look at one of our homes that had been remodeled.
Yes, the only concern I have, and we did do a great job with those schools we remodeled. Our high schools, it's time to have high schools that look like top-notch high schools, the state of the art. And I, we've been talking about this for a while, and I certainly hope whatever you come to- come to us in recommending, that we look at making sure these high schools have what they need to have, facilities are what they should be compared to many facilities we've seen in some of these other visits we made. I would love to see that for these high schools. And back to what you're saying for the plan, what are we going to do with the middle schools? And I would like to ask, when you come before us next time, we have something to look at, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
I can assure you that if we are fortunate enough to get these high schools done, you won't recognize them.
All right.
You won't recognize John Tyler, you won't recognize Robert E. Lee. That is certainly my goal, too. I have always had a clear, you as a board have always given us a clear mission as to what these schools should look like, and Mr. Burfield, I also know that we want these schools that are not trendy, that are long-lasting, and they're staples of our community, and that's always been a clear vision from you guys to me. So I promise you, you will not recognize them. And furthermore, you had mentioned cost, Dr. Crawford, we have a long, Corrigan's helping us with that, we have a long list, we're monitoring costs as bids come in that are all around our area, and I have a spreadsheet, so we're modeling our costs, and they're not extravagant, and they're tight, but according to historical data and what we're seeing and how we're seeing bids open today. So when we come back to you, we will have some clear options. I'm actually meeting tomorrow, and these are still in conceptual stage, so we do have site plans, we have looked at all the models Dr. Crawford has mentioned, and even then some. So we'll need a clear plan, but I believe that we can remodel these facilities and make them top-notch.
Talking about conceptuals, while we're here tonight, I don't want to drag the meeting out, but Dr. Crawford does have the, some conceptuals that while, I think the board...
I just sent them to you, Mr. Orbaugh.
Yeah. So we're kind of a work in progress here.
If we have a couple of minutes, I've got another. So we've, we've looked at three basic levels, if I read these numbers, we've looked at a $200 million level, we've looked at maybe 250 if you added a middle school, and if you had gone with two new high schools plus a middle school, we're at $300 million. So that money has to come from someplace. And so as we talked about in the future, for future meetings, looking at plans and site plans and options, assuming at some point we'll also look at bonding capacity and the impact on the tax rate for each of those levels of options as well, is that correct?
That is correct. Would you like me to provide you some of the results of the information that I have?
I defer to the president.
It's good, it's a great question, and I'm sure Dr. Crawford's got that, that to me, right now, it doesn't make a huge difference. One thing we need to continue to do is we need to gauge and find out what the community wants us to do. I have learned through my process with this is that if you get too caught up in what you want to do, it doesn't work out for you. So we need to find, we need to have the options, and then we need to get with the community and say, here's what the options are, to have the kind of facilities that Tyler Texas has and prides itself on, and then at what level does a community want, you know, wants you to move forward with that? And then obviously, tax rate, as Reverend Hager said, is always a consideration in this community, and it certainly is for us, and that's why we've asked, I've asked Dr. Crawford, and he's volunteered, it wasn't, wasn't just me, but to look at a option of a somewhat hybrid where we can take, there's parts of both of these campuses that are, even at Robert E. Lee, there's parts of that campus that weren't built in 1958. 58 was the original campus, but the gymnasium was built in 80-ish?
Eighty-five.
Yeah, I mean, it was in the 80s. The Fine Arts Center was, I think, after I was even there, I don't...
Yeah, it was built a little later than the gym.
Late 80s, early 90s. So we had this same discussion when it came down to rice, there was, there was a group that said, you know what, we've got to have equity across the district, every, every campus has got to be brand-new if one campus is brand-new. And after we talked that through, that didn't make common sense. If you've got a building that was built in 78 and you got one that was built in, you know, the 50s, that's just, there's a difference there, and we've got life in buildings. I do this for a living, and we don't just tear down buildings that are old. If we can find use in them and we have life in them, if there's a way to take what we've got and find a way to put it with what's new, I'm a proponent of that, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, I'm just saying that's one of the options we've looked at, and that would enable us to get a tax rate, you know, that's much more manageable than if we built all new. So here's, this is, I'm looking at John Tyler here. You want to talk a little bit about that, Mr. Loper?
I will, I have a pointer, and y'all won't be able to see it on your screen, but everyone out here can. At this bottom-left area right there, and y'all, keep in mind, this is just conceptual drawings, and it's for, an exercise for us to say, can it fit, will it fit? If it can, how would it be arranged on the campus and the site in accordance with our existing facility? So as you can see on the right, the aerial is the existing building, you can kind of compare, in the middle here is existing building on the conceptual drawing. The bottom-left would be like a new gym, I'm sorry, a new cafeteria with the classroom wing above. This, all the way across the front would be a new academic wing, new fine arts area right over here in the, where is the, where the teacher's parking lot is right now. So as you can see, when you look from the loop, everything would be, look, brand-new because we're just, we're going to build it new. Gymnasium's a great gymnasium. Mr. Burfield, you had mentioned Robert E. Lee, John Tyler has a great, and it's like a coliseum, and it can be renovated, and all the gyms are side-by-side. As far as relationship with spaces, it's perfect, because you keep your noisy areas all together, then you can put your fine arts up there at the front, and then you can create the entrances and after-hour entrances for not only the gymnasium for games, but the fine arts for programs and things that happen after hours. So I think, you know, it's a, it's a process for us to go through to make sure it can work, and we think it can work really good there at John Tyler, and save the taxpayers some money, because the structure is a good concrete cast-in-place structure that's where I want to be when a bad storm hits, unless it's the administration building. Okay?
Other, while you're on John Tyler, other than that top-left portion of the campus, the facility is connected, and that is one thing that we're, we've moved into in education that's different from the 80s or the 60s or the late 50s of what Lee was constructed, is we're looking at opportunities to keep students safe from external threats, but at the same time, being able to supervise them. Our society's different, and one of the issues that we have at this campus and at Lee is the supervision of students at all times. Because of the addition of the portables, where the band halls located here, where that, I guess that's a CTE building that's on the very top, just below the tennis courts, those are all external areas to where students are certainly in the elements, either on their way to class or maybe even during class time. We've done a good job of securing the actual site with the fencing and the patrols that we have, and along with the security staff that we have, but at the same time, this does provide us an opportunity for that safety and security and have students inside the building at all times unless they're on an athletic field. Mr. Loper's correct, that gym is phenomenal, you cannot build a better gym than what John Tyler has right now, and then attaching a performing arts center and an actual band hall and orchestra hall like a normal 5A, 6A high school instead of a metal building is something those students deserve, on top of the academic wings that we're going to provide, along with a new entrance for administration, new offices area as well. Excited about this, as far as what we've done here and at Lee on the schematics, on the site plan.
One comment, several years ago, it's probably what been four years ago, we made a decision to upgrade the athletic facilities at both high schools, and one thing I like is being able to keep our word that we didn't waste that money, and then put forth a project in front of the voters that says, all right, you know what, we're going to tear out this stuff we just spent this money on because we're building all brand-new. You know, to be able to fit the pieces together means a lot to me that the district, the money the district spent and the money that the community spent on, on those athletic facilities, that we can still get some life out of them.
Yeah, those aren't going away. We looked at a lot of scenarios, now certainly we don't have, that's, that just really houses football, John Tyler and football at Lee, and we'll need to make sure that all of our sports are covered with, with dressing facilities, but yeah, I think the only thing that you're going to see that we might consider actually not extending the use of, and that is this field house on the...
Yeah.
That thing needs to go.
Yeah.
And then the ag shop that's there, those are, we could certainly do better than that, and we do have that programmed into this, but we certainly want to keep what we can and then do away with what, what we need to do away with for kids. If we're fortunate enough to go forward, I want to be the one that's on the front-end loader that knocks down the band hall at John Tyler. They do a great job for the facility that they're in. Outstanding.
I can arrange that.
Okay, outstanding. Our bands, both of our bands at both, at both places are doing a great job with what they've got, and so kudos to the students and the staff.
Yeah, so what I'm seeing here is kind of some new soccer fields, new baseball, new softball down at the south at IAC, just, I'm future IAC indoor athletic complex or something.
Yeah, we were looking to see if we could get an indoor workout facility, and if, if we programmed one in there, we just want to make sure that it would fit.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a for-sure thing.
So, and I got new fine arts, new academic wing, new cafeteria there to the southwest?
Yes, sir.
And then the core would be all improved?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we got new and improved.
Yeah, we, we have a two-pipe chiller system there, and if you're familiar with those kind of systems, it's either hot or it's cold.
Yeah.
And when it's down, everybody's down. So all that, we're basically gutting the building out, you know, we'll have to phase it in and work around, you know, our kids, you basically get your new built first and that academic wings move everybody over there. It's difficult, and we all have to give up and sacrifice things, but you know, we have great principals, we've got great staff, they've done a great job at these other remodels, and we've made it happen, and in some cases, scores have even improved while we've been there, because the kids are excited about it also.
Mr. Loper, on this site, would you use your pointer to identify the area that if we did build a brand-new school here, where that would be located?
That brand-new school would have to be located right all through here in the front parking lot.
Right on the loop?
Right on the loop.
And that, that does concern us, certainly if we went that route, we'd make it happen, but...
And we'd be going to three stories.
Yeah.
Something like this, though, you could stay open? A renovation like, of a scale?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have experience in that now.
Yeah, and this is what you referred to earlier, mentioning, what was, 89 million? Was that the price tag?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven versus 130, we ran it.
Okay. Go ahead and flip it over, Mr. Orbaugh, to, I guess, the Lee site plan.
Did I do that? As you can see, this is Donny Brook that runs all the way down where my pointer's going, which is the right-hand side of y'all's picture on your computer, that's Donny Brook. And of course, the top of the picture on the short end is the loop, and y'all can recognize the field there. When you look at the conceptual drawing, of course, we're going to leave the field right there, because we have made all those improvements. We're looking at saving the field house, which was being built when I came to work here, so that was in 2000, and of course, we would do some remodeling. We're also going to save, the Fine Arts Center is right there where, I think that's it, right in here where my pointer is, and we would put our other fine arts or band or choir orchestra and all those areas, and also build, I can't read that, I think that's where our cafe is.
Cafeteria.
Okay, cafeteria. We wanted it closer there because Red Raider Drive, though it's not really showing on this picture, is right there, and that gives us access to our deliveries and things for our trucks. And then in the very front, right here, is a brand-new academic wing. We're contemplating, because we're able to save enough and we end up with enough new construction all up here around fine arts and athletics and all that area, we may not need as much square foot as far as academic, and may be able to go two-story instead of three there. We're still working that out. Of course, y'all do recall the mitigation that we had to go through with the Army Corps of Engineers, the mitigation of the floodplain and the wetlands, and that is this green area that we cannot touch. But I think we've come up with a nice way to not only use that as a buffer, but also to leave some nice greenery on the, on the site, and then of course, down here in the bottom-left is where swimming tennis is. Now, because we've kind of moved back away from shallow road there, it gives us great access and able to kind of circle the campus with all of our inner roads, and then all of our fields would end up, and tennis courts would end up on the loop end up there. So you've got baseball field, you've got two practice fields, tennis courts, and that smaller field is your softball field, and then your football fields. So we're utilizing quite a bit the gymnasiums, the K-Gym and the P-Gym is what they call them, one's varsity and junior varsity, and somehow connecting all that, again, bringing back what Dr. Crawford had said earlier, and keeping the campus enclosed and not all these other detached buildings that we have right now at Robert E. Lee.
So, Mr. Loper, so just on your, with your clicker, go ahead and run, run your clicker along where the gym is right now?
The gym is right here, existing gym.
So that stays?
Uh-huh, that stays.
And then hop over across the breezeway right there to K-Gym?
It's right in there.
And then run your clicker all the way up to that, that entire building, which houses the, the old, the cafeteria, the current cafeteria?
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's the gym and the cafeteria all in that area, and then what, you know, as we talk and we think will convert to cafeterias at that point become locker rooms for your fields for like girls' softball, you know, track, soccer, all of those other sports that we use, that we have to have. use, that we have to have locker rooms for.
And right now, that's the plan at both places, that if we had to go to this renovation attitude, that we can repurpose those structures from cafeterias into locker space for PE and outdoor sports.
And we're still actually, we're vetting the numbers still. We got a pretty good idea, but obviously, we have to break it down. If you remodel a big space, it doesn't cost as much as like putting in a locker room that was a cafeteria, so that remodel cost is higher than the bigger space, so we're really looking at it closely and breaking all the costs down for the specialized areas that we have. And that costs that way because of the plumbing and all that, you have to put all that in new for the locker rooms.
Yeah, and that's an interesting fit in there with the, because that is probably the gym from 1958 and the cafeteria from 58.
Yeah, that's the original gym.
Just make sure, if we do, that it, we're able to blend that in the right way. I'm an old, I've been in a lot of locker rooms, and that's, we're from that era that you didn't have the fancy locker rooms they have now, so I'm not, I mean, I'm all for making use of it, making it functional, and I know the locker rooms for most sports other than football are pretty terrible right now over at Lee, they're embarrassing and they're bad, and we can do better than that, so we just want to make sure we do, even if we use an older.
They're bad at both places. I can say that we will have stalls for our students to be able to have some privacy at both places.
Mr. Loper, there was, when the district purchased Tennis and Swim, there was the talk of moving everything further south and opening up frontage on the loop that could be sold, but it seems like in an effort to utilize existing facilities and keep everything compact and together for security purposes, that's pushed this whole thing north. Could you comment on that?
I can comment on that, and when you look at that conceptual design over there, what I actually like about this, instead of being very close to the loop or very close to the shallow road, is we've actually centered the property now. And that gives us a lot, I don't know if any of y'all have been there drop-off time, but we still, even though we moved the guard shack down Donnybrook, we still get people backing up on the loop. So with all the inner roads that we have and Red Raider being ours, that I believe that we can relieve a lot of that, and I think it just fits the property better. Now, I guess the one advantage that, or disadvantage, is that by going backwards, not backwards, but back to the north with the entire facility of what we added, as opposed to a different way that we looked at it, is it takes away any property that we may be able to sell at that point, because we still need our fields, but I think it gives us both, you know, with the fields on the loop side, and then the green areas on the south side, I just think it gives a really good buffer for the campus.
Yeah, with just, I mean, just the rough numbers you're presenting here, it would seem like if we moved north to save the difference between a new school at 130 million and a renovated school at 122, that would be worthwhile if the value of any unused land on the loop would be greater than that, or it wouldn't be worthwhile if it were greater. So if we were to, if we could sell that land for more than what we're saving in the existing facilities, it would seem like it would make sense to push it down south and do new rather than renovated. Is that from an economic standpoint?
From an economic standpoint, the property, we've had it appraised, and the property that we would say would not make up the difference on the savings of moving to this plan right here.
Would you, would you keep the guard shack?
I'm gonna put it in the trophy case.
It's a creative site because of that bottom-right quadrant, the credits, the wetlands, the Mud Creek Tributary. It makes it tough because you could have effectively used that southern quadrant to put some athletic fields in if we would have been given full release on that, but from what I've heard from our coaches at both locations, if you remember the movie Grease, to where they had track and baseball and football practice going on at the same time, and soccer balls flying everywhere, that's kind of what's happening at both locations right now, so we're trying to give a little bit of space to our athletes. We are 6A, so the northern, using that northern swath of land there, at least at Lee, is probably where we're gonna have to put athletic facilities.
My recollection of that movie is there's very little we'd want to replicate from Grease on any of our campuses.
No, that's right. 1958.
Mr. Loper, if you could, I don't know if you can comment generally, and I know Mr. Burckfeld has more experience on this issue than I do, I've done three construction projects at our church since 2010, and this last one has probably increased by 30, 40% just in the planning phase alone over the last two years. Can you comment on pricing trends that you're seeing here in commercial construction?
Yes, sir, we're seeing, you know, just to give you an example, some of our last facilities that we opened were from 174 to $176 a square foot construction cost, that's without, you know, any FF and E and architect fees and things, and now we're seeing 190 to 195 dollars a square foot.
At other districts?
Sir?
Is that what you're projecting, or is that what other districts bond?
That's what other districts bonds are open, and up, and a lot of it depends on their type of construction also. You know, we've seen them higher than that, just like 230 dollars just for construction cost, but averaging out, that's what we're seeing currently.
Yeah, and from a construction side, I think Dr. Crawford mentioned it, when he talked about '08, you know, that was a construction recession in East Texas and in Tyler, and everybody that was in that industry knows that was a completely different time than was before that and since then.
As he had mentioned...
Got a plan for what things are now, because I don't know that we'll see another time like that.
Has Walks a hatchet bit out yet?
Yes.
Okay, that's one we've kind of used as a test case right now, and I think that's where we're getting a lot of our data.
It's one of them.
One of them.
Which is?
And we get in the Houston area too, but we also have to be careful by region because things in Houston area cost more than in doing East Texas. So, there's a percentage increase just depending on the geographical area that you're in in Texas.
What would the capacity be of both of these buildings?
2750.
2750.
Yes, sir.
And we've been pretty tight on the programming, we've already gone through that exercise. In fact, before I was even hired superintendent, we'd already done a lot of pre-work, and that's just, that's what good school districts do, they, regardless if you're about to call one, you're always doing those type of things to make sure that you're meeting students' needs, and one thing that they've heard a lot from me was, I don't like dark classrooms. And I think our staff learned that about the hog situation, when we had the portables, we had an actual capacity of counting those portables of about, I think, 800 students.
Yes, sir.
And we had 400 kids over there. So knowing that those classrooms are small, that's one thing, but I don't care for dark classrooms, so a lot of the programming that you've seen, that you're going to see on this is really, really tight. Removing away from teachers owning classrooms to actually having some cubicle space and maximizing the classroom space more, as opposed to maybe having them dark for two periods. So I can say that the 2750 is as tight as we can possibly make it. But we've also factored in some of the other programs that we have that are becoming more popular. You've got 400 students that, by the time these high schools, if they are enacted, are at early college high school, and we've got the Career Technology Center that's having, what, 400 students per block over there right now? So that's another 400 students that are off of the campus at any one time, so you're looking at, you also have RISE as well, we're hoping for 300 at one point, and that's a little aggressive, so you're looking at over 1,000 students, reduced capacity if we were to grow to where we think 2750 is the appropriate amount to have on these campuses, and also looking at the demographic study.
Okay, board from here, take the information that you've been given, if you've got any questions about it, call Mr. Loper, call Dr. Crawford. At this point, it's kind of the input stage, pretty soon we'll be reaching out to members of the community, you know, like we've done in the past, and try to get an idea of what this community wants, and if anything, and we will put it in their hands, and we appreciate what they've entrusted us with before, and we'll do our best to do it right again if given the opportunity. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Mr. President, without committing to any specific timeline, we've talked through some things, so I heard the superintendent direct that some more specific drawings would be part of our process. We've talked about bonding capacity and the impact on taxes as part of the process. Are there other steps in this process that, and Mr. Burckfeld, you mentioned reaching out to the community to gain input on these options, are there other steps to this process that are definitely going to take place at some point should we continue moving down this road?
Yes, and a lot of that depends on what the community wants. In the past, in, I guess in the early bond, which was maybe '03, the community got together and formed a committee that worked toward the passage of the bond. At that time, the board basically looked at the facility's plan, the long-range plan, and we were more of a partner with the community on that one. The next bond, we had the plan already in place, majority of the same committee came back and worked to pass that bond. We were not, in either one of those cases, we were not out front as the only person, you know, pushing for a bond. I can't stress enough what a community-led deal this is in Tyler, Texas, in my experience. Some other communities may, it may be a school district-led, but in Tyler, it's been community-led. So the last bond, we had a community-led also, we had to do a little more of the grunt work to decide, alright, you know, it's shrinking down, what's the priorities here? From an educational side, what are the priorities here? I kind of see us being in that situation, but maybe the job's a little easier because we have fewer facilities this time, but I still want us to provide the information. It'd be my recommendation, we put the information out there, we meet with the community, we see what the community wants us to do. If the community wants to move forward on a bond in the spring, then you've got a late February deadline to call that bond by, and a lot of work needs to be done between now and then. These guys will hone numbers, like Mr. Loper's saying, you know, efficiencies in drawings, efficiencies in land use and building use, and I would say on our end from the board's side, you know, Dr. Crawford will start putting together some outreach to the community, engaging kind of how that support goes, and then how each board member fits in in that process, we'll just have to work through.
I can say to you, the last bond, of course, you know, four of us can't show up at the same time, but we made sure that each community meeting, there were board members present to assist in answering any questions that were asked of our citizens in the community. And we had them all around Tyler to make sure we were very inclusive.
All right, we will discuss this again soon. If there's no further discussion, we will move on to Lone Star Governance.
I guess we actually put this on the agenda this last Thursday, as we were all going through a transformational existential process. Introspective. But as the public knows, it was reported in the paper that, in an address during public participation, that TEA had sent us a letter that asked us to attend some governance training as provided by TEA, and I'll be honest with you, public, those of us here at the DIAS probably were a little skeptical about this and didn't really understand why, as we'd done a fairly decent job of improving our ratings at campuses, going from 11 to 9 to 3 of low-performing campuses. Three's still unacceptable, no doubt about it, but at the same time, we were able to go through that governance training as performed by Deputy Commissioner A.J. Craybill, and we wanted to put an agenda item up here to maybe provide some reflection from the school board about what your thoughts were going through that process, and maybe even give the public a little bit about what that workshop looked like. It basically had seven areas that it focused upon. Distinguishing between inputs, outputs, and outcomes, y'all could probably repeat this with me. Distinguishing between formative and summative assessments. Distinguishing between program evaluation and performance evaluation. Understand the concept of student outcome goals and constraints. The effective monitoring of student outcomes. Effectively hold the superintendent accountable for improving student outcomes. And draft a Lone Star Governance implementation timeline, which the board will begin work upon here within the next month. It's 18 hours' worth of training conducted over two days. If it wouldn't have been worthwhile, I think that we would probably would have had a rebellion on our hands, and we'd have walked out, but we stuck through it, and very proud of this board, and I will effectively say this, it's the best team-of-eight training I've ever been through. I'll let y'all talk.
Not the most enjoyable training, but the most effective.
I was a little sore because everything was done through the Socratic method, and you had to sit in a chair like this and use your lap as your desk. It was pretty tough, but it was very challenging, at the same time, was, I think, set us on a course of improvement, of continuous improvement, that if we have fidelity to it, we can make a difference in our performance here and really turn this thing around.
Well, speaking from an educator's standpoint, it was very intense, but it was something we needed to hear, and it has caused us to look at things, some things in a different way, and to continue to move forward and doing what we know we need to do for students.
I think it's important to mention that prior to this continuous improvement training, that you had already started a process to look into some other models of continuous improvement, so we were already, I feel like, heading down this path of trying to make it better, trying to improve student outcomes, and doing what we could to do that. So I think while it was great and it was good, I think we were on our way down that path already, don't you think?
I do. Interviewing in front of the board, when this job was, whenever I was competing for this job, I did bring up Herschel's Bedford ISD, and while they're about 20 percentage points shorter... And while they're about 20 percentage points shorter, short of our economically disadvantaged numbers, they've had a pretty good run here for the last 15 years and it's a, it's a good district to, to maybe aspire to become. Completely different demographics and values in the Metroplex, I realize that. But at the same time, when we're talking about making a difference in the lives of the students here, they have a great model for continuous improvement there. And Mr. Martinez and myself, along with Dr. Hanson, were able to attend a brief board presentation in Herschelus Bedford ISD. And a lot of the things that we discussed at this, these last two days have elements of that. So I'd agree with you that we've, we've just been looking for that right framework for, for Tyler and we might have found it.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you. I wasn't really looking forward to going for two days, eight hours, was it eight hours or nine?
Nine per day.
And nine hours per day, sitting in a chair.
Plus travel time.
But after about two hours into the training, it began to kind of soften up on me and I really enjoyed it. First time I've had a training like that for the team of eight. So it was something that I think that our district will be able to use and I'm looking forward to us taking part in trying to implement this as we go along. Thank you.
I think one of the things that was interesting, when you talk about improving student achievement, particularly as we sit here on the board, it's very easy to, to believe that all the improvement has to come outside of us. And so that training for two days showed us the things that we can do to impact student achievement, not just what everyone else needs to be doing, but how, how we can act. In seminary, they taught that a mist in the pulpit is a fog in the pews, meaning if you're unclear from the pulpit, it gets really, really, really unclear the further it goes out. And so as I think about clarity around goals, clarity around how we define progress, how we measure progress, that clarity, I think, then moves out into the rest of the district in a way that is very powerful. And so, while I think the previous boards have done a good job setting goals for the superintendent, I think our training showed us that we can be even clearer in how we set those goals and how they can be, as we learned over and over again, smart goals, not just intelligent goals, but smart goals. That would be very clear and helpful for you as you lead the rest of the district.
Yeah, I, I appreciated the, the framework of, of governance, you know, that it outlined for us. And although we have had team of eight training before, it's never, never been that helpful, I would, I would say, as this was, mainly because it focuses on a form of governance that puts student outcomes at the forefront of everything. And, you know, it really made us look at how we were, you know, spending our time and what we were doing and, okay, how did that relate to student outcomes? And so I appreciate it from the state level that, you know, they're, one, putting the onus on, you know, trustees and, you know, it's, it was a very introspective process. And, and two, how they're shifting the focus to student outcomes and very simple, you know, simple goals that you can pursue successful student outcomes from. So I thought it was, you know, helpful. And, you know, it was just one more, kind of my, I had a bit of a, it had a bit of a weight to it, in my opinion, because we do have things coming up. And we, we were tracking pretty well as far as our performance was going. And my fear was, I was hoping that we wouldn't have to deconstruct what we had going on and reroute in order to appease the state. And, but what I think we can do is, is keep tracking, go on the same trajectory, except hone in our focus on a few ways to, to impact student outcomes. Because adult behaviors affect student outcomes, as we all learned.
So to go on record, you're saying that, that it was not just some bureaucratic exercise?
I don't believe it was. I didn't get the vibe that A.J. was a pure bureaucrat. I thought he did a pretty good job of, of relaying the fact that, that he actually cared about and believed in, not just students, but governance methods, governing methods, and that he had a pretty good grasp on what might work in a lot of places. And, and that's something that we don't get very much, I don't believe, from the TEA. We get a lot of preaching about students and, and socioeconomics and you can do this for this group and that. But a lot of it, the onus is not on us, it's on you, you know, and it's on your team. And, you know, I'll, I'll say that this form really does kind of get us all together and on the same, going in the same direction, hopefully, which I believe we are.
I mentioned this at the training, we, we've got a different model at the agency. You've got a, a former board president at a large urban school district, very intelligent man. And his, and his top chief is the guy that provided the training and who's a former board member in Kansas City, Missouri. So they, they, they kind of understand what it is to go here on the DIAS and what it takes to support leadership and get it, we're so impactful that it's actually down to the classroom level. I think that was something that, that I can say that initially, in the very early stages of, of this regime, that we're, we see a different agency, one that we haven't seen in quite a while.
And that's what I was going to say. One of the things that I took from this training, other than the deep introspection that we were forced to participate in, was that this TEA is deeply concerned about the academic performance of students, but they look at it as a partnership with them instead of the agency saying, this is what you need to do and you need to do this. It's more of a partnership with support from TEA for, for the local education agency.
Elliot?
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
Yeah. All I can add is that we're gonna do it and we're gonna do it well as a board and it's gonna make a difference to the children in this district. And I have no doubt that's what's gonna happen. It's gonna be a great six months or so as we pull this thing together to get to them and we're just gonna do it. That's all there is to it.
I can say we're gonna do it. I say we're gonna do it.
Inside joke.
Yes, y'all don't know this, but the first thing they asked everyone was to talk about a time when your lack of integrity affected student outcomes. And so when everybody tried to say "we" or "our district" or whatever, he made you go back and say "aye" and finish the sentence. So try it, try it sometime. It's fun. Okay, guys? Anything else tonight? Let me, in closing, I just want to recognize a good friend of TISD that passed away, Mr. Ray Thompson. Ray has been the COO, I believe, of Mother Francis Hospital and Christus Mother Francis. And he has been a great competitor for the city of Tyler and he has been a loyal friend to TISD for several decades. And we're gonna miss Ray and I just wanted to, to say that we appreciate everything that we had in the partnership with him over these years and, and we pray for his family. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, future business, real quick. Regular meeting, December 12th. We've actually flipped the workshop, December 15th. We will have some continuous, some continuous improvement planning and more Lone Star Governance workshopping on December 15th. Thank you.
Move with your turn. All right, it's our second?
Second.
All in papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We're adjourned. We'll see you at the State of the District luncheon. And Dr. Crawford will.